Thank you very much for coming. I'm showing it's 7:33 PM. It's May 23rd. Ms. Sarcisi, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Barker?
Here.
Mr. Darrow?
Here.
Mr. Engel?
Here.
Mr. Martin?
Here.
Mr. Miller?
Mr. Molnar?
Here.
I'd like to ask our council president, Ken Martin, to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, after which Nick will lead us in tonight's invocation.
My Pledge of Allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Do not take revenge, my dear friends, but leave room for God's wrath. For it is written, "It is mine to avenge; I will repay," says the Lord. On the contrary, if your enemy is hungry, feed him. If he is thirsty, give him something to drink. In doing this, you will heap burning coals on his head. Do not be overcome by evil, but overcome evil with good. Amen.
Amen. Okay, very good. Moving on to financial report. We have a financial report. Do I have a motion to accept?
I'd like to make a motion to accept the financial report dated April 30th as presented by the financial director.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Post? All right, the next part of this meeting is public comments. In order to give public comments, you need to sign in. We do have a list. We ask that you limit your comments to five minutes, please, and come up here to the podium stating your name and address. Number one on the list is Scott Smith. Scott?
Hi, good evening. My name is Scott Smith. I live at 1576 Elizabeth Lane. Thanks for the opportunity to talk. What I'd like to discuss is the proposal for the Cable Wake Park that's being considered by the Planning Commission right now. I'd like to share with you my family's opinion on this, as well as the neighbors that I've spoken with. Basically, we think that the current proposed location right now, which is on the north side of 82, is unacceptable. There's kind of three main reasons why we find that unacceptable. The first is the noise to the residents that live close to there. I can sit in my backyard right now and hear people driving golf balls off of the driving range of the golf course. And it's not that that's an annoying sound, but I can hear that. I'm actually going to be living closer to the proposed location of the Cable Park. And I can't imagine that the noise from the Cable Park would be less. I would imagine it would be more like screaming teenagers and kids having fun, which is what you would do at a facility like that. I've looked at the developers are modeling the design off of some parks called Wake Nation. There's one of those in Cincinnati. There's one of those outside of Houston. You can pull up those locations on Google Earth and take a look at the terrain. There's not residences close to those facilities. I think there's a reason for that. You know, those developers kind of knew that these sort of parks are loud and cause noise, and they built them away from residents, unlike the position that's being considered right now. And finally, putting it right next to a church, I think, is somewhat irresponsible as well. I wouldn't want to go to services next to a park like that. The second concern we have is the impact on property values. I mean, people like to build houses and live close to things like forests and parks and golf courses. They don't like to live close to amusement parks. And so there's concern if the park is successful, there's noise and things like that to affect property values. But there's even a bigger concern if the park isn't successful. If it goes under, which I think is fairly likely, you take a look at, you know, what happened. You have competition with Jogga Lake. You have the fact that the amusement park couldn't sustain itself. You've had Dover Lake Park that's closed down. You know, we've had some struggles with the golf course as well. So if that park were to close, what happens then? We have shuttered billions. We have a stagnant lake. We have vandalism, things like that, which could have a bigger impact on property values. And then finally, the current plans call for clearing some of the forest, which I think is bad to do to the forest at all, although, you know, the initial plans right now don't, you know, call for a huge area to be cleared. But what happens if the park is successful? There's no parking that's built in the plan right now. If they need to expand to put in parking, if they need to expand to put in more facilities and such, there would probably be more forest clear. There's no other place for that to grow with the current location. My wife and I were visited by the developers. We had a long conversation with them. They went through kind of what their plans were in detail. They showed us the design. They showed us where everything was going to be. Talked about what their mitigations would be for some of our concerns, but we left that meeting, you know, with our concerns still standing. They did not do much to convince us that the concerns I went through weren't going to be a big problem. So the reason I'm here is just to ask the council to take these concerns into consideration. And if this is something that the city wants to seriously consider, to consider a location that isn't going to be such a burden on residents. Thanks.
Thank you, Scott. Next is Sylvia Hanikin.
Mr. Mayor, I could reserve my time till after the Wake Boarding Park people want to speak. Do you want me to do that or proceed?
Whatever you feel comfortable with.
Yeah, I could wait till.
Okay.
I know there's a number of people that want to speak, so.
No problem. All right, next on the list for the Cable Park is Todd Wagner.
I'm Todd Wagner. I live at 1708 Maple Grove Drive in Twinsburg. And I couldn't say it any better than what Mr. Smith said in terms of my views about the Cable Park as well. My property also, you know, butts that area. I've talked to a number of the residents, my neighbors, in Twinsburg, and we have the same concerns. I'm a CPA and evaluation analyst by profession, and I share Mr. Smith's concerns about the business, long-term proposition of that facility in that location, and then the liability to the community if it's not successful. So I appreciate the opportunity to voice my concern and opinion and share exactly what Mr. Smith said. Thank you.
All right, next we have Alan Frisman.
Good evening. My name's Alan Frisman. I live at 1469 Elizabeth Lane. Been a resident of Elizabeth Lane for over 20 years. I've seen the economic growth of our city, and I think it's amazing. But I think that this proposal for this water park is completely unacceptable. I don't think our community is ready for something like this. I was here, we've lived on this, you know, we lived on the street when the golf course was developed, and we expressed our concern then, that what happens, you know, if the golf course doesn't make it? It didn't. It went under. It had all these grandiose plans for, you know, a boom to the city, and now this water park, you know, is being proposed, and I think that's such a, it's a terrible idea. The city is not going to be recognized for a water park. There's, the city is known for, you know, community development, but not for a water park. Thank you.
Next is Barbara Cornick.
Good. Good evening, Barbara Cornick, 1520 Elizabeth Lane. I'm here for the Cable Park. Just a couple of things. I'm, I guess I'm looking at it from the city's point of view, as well as our residents' point of view. I agree with everything they've said so far. I've told Rob and Eric I wish them a lot of luck someplace else. Here's the thing. So we have multiple things that happen with our parkland. It's extremely valuable. Our parkland is absolutely priceless. Once this is developed in this way, it's very hard to undo what they're doing. I'm worried about the costs that are involved in that. For instance, if it does not succeed, who is responsible for taking down all those cables and all the towers? I think there needs to be a bond to protect the city so that those things are removed. Also, I think we need to have some type of legislation or regulation for bacteria checking the water in the lake, so that people don't get sick if they come to our city to do something like this. I also think we need to know how profits are determined. We made that mistake with the golf course. We shouldn't be doing that again. So if you don't have that access to their profits, that doesn't help the city again in any other way. We did it with the golf course. The talk is doing this again. It was a mistake last time. We also need to look at impervious surfaces. Right now, it's a park. It's got beautiful trees. The trees drink up the water. So the lake could have all these things drain into the water. How does that keep the lake clean for people to swim in this lake? We don't swim at Longwood Park Lake that we already have. Is there something we could do to change that and move it over to there? I think it needs to be someplace else, like Jogga Lake, or Dover Lake, or one of those kind of things. It needs to be moved there. First of all, it doesn't belong here. But if, for some reason, you all decide to pass it, which is, to me, unfathomable, I think that you need to watch out for what happens with the city and what happens with the money that goes from the city. Thank you.
All right, moving on, Sylvia.
Sylvia Hanikin, Hampton Drive, Macedonia. I want to speak to ordinance 67, 2013, which is an ordinance to extend the current quarter percent emergency tax beyond the end of 2013. And what I'd like to talk about is three things. One, the emergency tax was passed just for that. There was a concern that we were going to be basically in a deficit position at the end of 2010, and that we did not want to be in that position, so we did, in fact, put that on the ballot, and it was, it was actually approved by 33 votes. It was promised by council and by everyone at that time that it would expire in three years, and that the, the whole process was strictly for an emergency. In fact, the emergency is over, just looking at the spending of the last two years. And I think it's important to keep your word. Once you've made that kind of promise to the voters, you should keep your word. So that's point number one. Point number two, we have spent a lot of money on road repair on critical roads, including the one that's going to be done this summer, South Bedford, which does, in fact, those roads did, in fact, need repair. But that level of spending is not a continuous need, and I don't think that we have a good view of what our continuous needs are, because we don't have a good plan that lays out the whole story. So I am concerned, because last year, because we had extra money, we started tucking money away in various places, including raises for everybody, and that's affecting the overall budget, and various other kinds of long-term issues that have an economic and financial tail to them. But I just think that we need to pause right now, and we have no emergency to extend this tax. We're going to have a very comfortable position by the end of this fiscal year, as everyone knows. We need to pause. We need to look at our true long-term plans. I would like, as I've said before, a five-year plan on both the capital side and a routine update of that plan, which would allow us to look at what our real long-term needs are for the various maintenance and repairs, which we are going to have, including roads. I think we can take the time to do that. I don't think there's an emergency right now, and I think it's a bad time to try to tell people that, oh, well, that was an emergency then, but now we've got a different idea. So I think, just to summarize, I oppose this, because it's reneging on our word. Thank you.
And last, John Casmer.
John Casmer, 849 Chinook Trail. I'm talking, representing the Longwood Manor Historical Society, nonprofit group of unpaid volunteers restoring the Longwood Manor in Longwood Park. I've got two items to bring people up to date. Our roof plan that our architect submitted to the Building Department was approved earlier this week. Thank you. And our architect is currently working on the more extensive architectural plans that the city has required that we prepare for the change of use. He told me that he'll know by next week when those plans will be available, Mr. Deemer. All this, all the architectural plans are being paid for by Longwood Manor Historical Society. All the work is being done by volunteers with donated materials and with some materials paid for by Longwood Manor Historical Society. This roof's going to add a lot of value to this house, historic value to this house. It's mostly donated by a company, and some of it is purchased by us. It's synthetic slate. And secondly, I wanted to make the community aware that Donald McColsky, the wife of our treasurer of Longwood Manor Historical, died suddenly last week. We asked the community for prayers for the fam, for the family. Deb McColsky is a very special person who has been with Longwood Manor Historical for a long time, put in many countless hours of unpaid work for us. Don McColsky is a veteran. Mayor Long, as you know, was a veteran. He actually served in two world wars. We're going to add Don McColsky's memorabilia to Colonel Long's and to be displayed in the future at Longwood Manor when it's reopened. We've discussed intended uses of Longwood Manor. Sounds like I'm.
Deemer, that's all right. Go ahead.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We've discussed intended uses of the Longwood Manor. We'd like, we feel it would be a completely fitting and appropriate use of the home of a veteran to be, to use it as a veteran's memorial home. We'll invite families with veterans in our community to bring memorabilia to Longwood Manor when it reopens. Their items will be displayed permanently for the public to see. Thank you.
All right.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I just want to make one comment. I want to point out that ordinance number 67-2013, no one on this council proposed nor sponsored this ordinance. In fact, when I saw that this ordinance requesting an extension of the quarter percent city income tax had been placed on the agenda, I asked that it be removed. It cannot be removed due to charter. I just want to make that clear, that no one on this council has sponsored or proposed this ordinance. This was strictly something that was placed on our agenda, and I will repeat, reiterate, that I had asked that it be removed and by charter, and by an understanding of the charter, it could not be. But I will say this. I believe that this council intends to keep its promise to the voters of Macedonia. And I believe that this council tonight will do the right thing, and the right thing is that we keep our promise to the voters of Macedonia.
We will have further discussion on that at the time we introduce it, so I'm sure your points will be well taken at that time. Moving on, we have pending and/or new legislation, starting with ordinance number 54-2013.
I'd like to offer ordinance 54-2013 for its third reading by title only.
I thought we were supposed to hold this at second reading because of a suggestion made by Councilman Barker.
Did you want to hold it?
If you could, please, Mr. Molnar.
I would just, I would make a motion to amend, amend it, say that it's only elected officials.
Well, that kind of defeats the purpose of the legislation, so perhaps we should hold it until and talk some more.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Molnar.
I rescind. Second reading, please. Second.
An ordinance creating Section 16123 of the Codified Ordinances prohibiting nepotism in Macedonia hiring practices.
Mr. Deemer, can I ask a favor of you, please?
Sure.
Concerning the conversations that we had tonight involving this ordinance, I believe it was Councilman Engel raised the question of whether there are already other measures in place that more or less nullify, to a certain extent, ordinance number 54-2013. Could you please take a look at that and provide us?
Well, I have for Councilman Molnar already. The answer is, we do have a policy, but the policy that the administration has just says that no relative can be supervised by another relative. This ordinance goes a bit further and says no relatives can be hired, period.
If you could, please, then, if you could.
Other than seasonal and part-time.
If you could, please, then, if you could take a look at other communities that have similar ordinances like this, I'd like to see if.
Sure.
This is something that is unusual or out of the ordinary, or whether this falls into line with what other communities have and are doing. Thank you, Mr. Deemer.
Okay.
Moving on, ordinance number 57-2013.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to offer ordinance 57-2013 for its first, second, and third reading by title only.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Post?
An ordinance amending and supplementing the 2013 Annual Appropriation Ordinance 21-2013.
And what's your pleasure?
Before we continue, I'd like to ask the Finance Director if he could explain what the appropriation changes are, and it's my understanding, and if you would confirm that this is budget-neutral in the sense that we're not increasing money already appropriated?
Just council training is the increase. Everything else would be passed through money, state fire grants, ODNR aquatics grant that we received, and the other grant, and then vehicle repair and maintenance is additional monies to appropriate from vehicles that we sold.
The council training is, was $2,500, if I remember?
Yes, sir.
Okay. With that, I move that we post, pass and post ordinance 57-2013 according to law.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Barker?
Yes.
Ms. Darrow?
Yes.
Mr. Engel?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Molnar?
Yes.
Ordinance 57-2013 passes. Moving on, resolution number 58-2013.
I would like to offer resolution number 58-2013 for its first, second, and third reading by title only.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Post?
A resolution authorizing acceptance of a detransfer of the property known as Old Macedonia City Hall 9699 Valley View Road from Summit County to the city of Macedonia.
And what's your pleasure?
I move that we pass and post ordinance, I mean, resolution number 58-2013 according to law.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Barker?
Yes.
Ms. Darrow?
Yes.
Mr. Engel?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Molnar?
Yes.
Resolution number 58-2013 passes. We need to say thank you to our council, Summit County Council Representative Nick Costandares, for his role in getting this to happen, and thank you to our county executive, Russ Pry, and the second-in-command, Jason Dobson. This is quite a gift for us to get, because the value of that property was $750,010 years ago. All right, moving on to ordinance number 59-2013.
I'd like to offer ordinance 59-2013 for its first reading by title only, please.
An ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into a lease agreement with Dr. James Christosik for an initial five-year term beginning October 1, 2013, for office space inside the Macedonia Family Recreation Center.
Moving on, ordinance number 60-2013.
I'd like to offer ordinance number 60-2013 for its first, second, and third reading by title only. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Post?
An ordinance authorizing directing the mayor to enter into a service contract with Solutions Behavioral Consulting, LLC, for the purpose of providing intervention services for special needs campers at the Macedonia Daycare, Day Camp, Macedonia Day Camp.
Brief little rundown, Angela.
Sure. This is, this will allow children with special needs to attend an all-inclusive camp setting this summer, in conjunction with our nine-week summer day camp that we offer.
Thank you. What's your pleasure?
I move that we pass and post according to law, ordinance number 60-2013. Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Barker?
Yes.
Ms. Darrow?
Yes.
Mr. Engel?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Molnar?
Yes.
All right, ordinance number 60 passes. Moving on to number 61-2013.
I would like to offer ordinance number 61-2013 for its first, second, and third reading by title only.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Post?
An ordinance authorizing directing the mayor to enter into a contract with Chagrin Valley Paving for the South Bedford Road Recycling and Resurfacing Improvement Project.
This has been long awaited. It's finally going to happen, and it could happen as soon as when school lets out. What's your pleasure?
I move that we pass and post ordinance number 61-2013 according to law.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Barker?
Yes.
Ms. Darrow?
Yes.
Mr. Engel?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Molnar?
Ordinance number 61 passes. Moving on to ordinance. Yes.
I haven't voted yet.
Oh, I'm sorry. Ordinance number 62-2013.
I'd like to offer ordinance 62-2013 for its first, second, and third reading by title only. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Post?
An ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with Tri-More Corporation with regard to the South Bedford Road Walkway Improvement Project, otherwise known as sidewalks.
This will be for sidewalks on the west side of South Bedford, right on the other side of the ditch that's in front of the homes. What's your pleasure?
Mayor, I'd just like to point out, earlier in the year when we were talking about capital improvements, this road hadn't even come up. And through working with our President, Mr. Martin, we talked about it, got it out there, and realized that that was something that was feasible. Mr. Miller brought up the sidewalks, which we all know is a safety hazard for any of the kids walking to school, so this is a great win for us. If you drove down that road, thank God, we're going to do this.
You know, Nick, I want to point out something else. Earlier tonight, we had a commentator who took the microphone and said, "This city does not have a good plan." I've seen this council and this mayor accomplish the widening of Route 82, put a new bridge over 82, now putting a bridge over Highland Road, repairing South Bedford, putting sidewalks there. I tell you what, we've accomplished, this council's accomplished a heck of a lot. And, Mr. Mayor, I think you had mentioned to me at one time that we've paved, we have repaved, or redone, or resurfaced just about every road in this city.
Every north-south arterial road will have been repaid and paid for cash by us.
Pretty good plan, don't you think? Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
I move that we pass and post according to law, ordinance 62-2013. Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Barker?
Yes.
Ms. Darrow?
Yes.
Mr. Engel?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
A triple yes.
Mr. Molnar?
Yes.
That's more than six votes.
Six, ordinance number 62 passes. Moving on, ordinance number 63-2013.
I'd like to offer ordinance 63-2013 for its first, second, and third reading by title only, please. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Post?
Oh. An ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into a service contract with Signal Service Company for the installation of an eastbound left-turn signal and loop detector at Highland and South Bedford Roads.
This is the city being proactive. This light is a crucial point for when school is in. It's not as big a deal now as it will be when the Highland Road Bridge is finished. So. So, the city is trying to be proactive and get this done before then. That particular light is not our light. It's a rental light. We will be putting a light there hopefully soon. That is a brand-new LED, preactivated, all those things preempted, all those things that are necessary for today's lighting system. But in the meantime, it's a great job by my staff to come up with some parts and pieces and save money and put something together so we can be proactive with the left turn there. Good job, Mike, Jim. The police were involved, of course, because it was at their wishes that we did this. So, moving on, we're going to say, what's your pleasure?
I move that we pass and post ordinance sixty-three, two thousand thirteen, according to law.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Barker?
Yes.
Ms. Darrow?
Yes.
Mr. Engel?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Mulner?
Yes.
Sixty-three passes. Moving on to ordinance number sixty-four, two thousand thirteen.
I'd like to offer ordinance number sixty-four, two thousand and thirteen, for its first, second, and third reading by title only.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
opposed?
In ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into a purchase agreement with Jack Deheney Companies for the purchase of a leaf collector through the State of Ohio Cooperative Purchasing Program.
And what's your pleasure?
I'd like to move that we pass and post according to law, ordinance number sixty-four, two thousand and thirteen.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Barker?
Yes.
Ms. Darrow?
Yes.
Mr. Engel?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Mulner?
I'd just like to point out, our Service Director in our work session stated that with this new machine, instead of using six people to work it, you can use three, and it has twice the power. So, it's a great win for us, yes.
Sixty-four passes. Moving on to ordinance number sixty-five, two thousand thirteen.
I'd like to offer ordinance number sixty-five, two thousand thirteen, for its first reading by title only.
Second.
In ordinance adopting the recommendation of the Planning Commission and zoning certain parcels of property from the limited industrial district to the general industrial district.
Could, we set a public hearing on this?
We can.
Could we do that now, or?
I think that's prudent. And given that, and given your summer sabbatical, and a thirty-day notice requirement, I suggest that it be on July twenty-fifth at seven fifteen.
Thank you very much, Josephine.
What date, Josephine?
July twenty-fifth at seven fifteen.
Thank you, Josephine.
Moving on, ordinance number sixty-six, two thousand thirteen.
I'd like to offer ordinance number sixty-six, two thousand and thirteen, for its first, second, and third reading by title only.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
opposed?
In ordinance consenting to ODOT project number sum SR two seventy-one, twelve sixty-two, PID number eighty-nine forty-five eight, that will begin in the fiscal year twenty fourteen pursuant to Section Ohio Revised Code five twenty-one zero one.
And the question was asked in the work session, what does all that mean? Two seventy-one Bridge is scheduled to be widened. They are going to make it, instead of two lanes on each side, three lanes. That will actually be from where it intersects with Route eight almost to the Chi-Hoggin County border. So, once again, Macedonia will be leading the way in making our community more accessible and getting in and out of here faster. But we are going to have some orange barrels again in two thousand and fourteen. What's your pleasure?
I move that we pass and post according to law, ordinance number sixty-six, two thousand and thirteen.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Barker?
Yes.
Ms. Darrow?
Yes.
Mr. Engel?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Mulner?
Yes.
Ordinance sixty-six, two thousand thirteen passes. Ordinance number sixty-seven, two thousand thirteen.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to offer ordinance number sixty-seven, two thousand thirteen, for its first, second, and third reading by title only.
Second.
All in favor?
No.
Aye.
No.
Roll call.
Mr. Barker?
No.
Ms. Darrow?
No.
Mr. Engel?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
I want to hear the ordinance ready.
It's right, I did not read it.
There's a motion on the floor.
Okay, shall I keep going?
Yep.
Okay. Mr. Miller? Mr. Mulner?
No.
Motion fails, so it's a question of first reading now.
I'm, I'm very disappointed that we have a council that wants to reconsider the promise that they made to the voters. I would like to offer ordinance number sixty-seven dash two thousand thirteen for its first reading by title only.
In ordinance amending sections one eighty-one zero three A, one eighty-one oh four, and one eighty-one oh six A of the codified ordinances of the city of Macedonia, Ohio, in order to extend the city's current income tax rate of two and a quarter percent through December thirty-first, two thousand and sixteen, for police capital purchases within the city limits and city capital improvements, and submitting the same to the electors on November fifth, two thousand and thirteen.
Scott, if you could just please give a little bit of a description so people know what this actually says.
This is just to, the thought is, in two thousand and fourteen, as the current legislation is on, the quarter percent that was enacted three years ago by most members of this council will roll off. And that will be a decrease of one point three million dollars, as predicted by our Regional Income Tax Association. We spent last year alone one point six million dollars in capital improvements in the city. None of the increase of the money that we received on this quarter percent has been used for wages. It's strictly been dedicated because there's so many areas of the city that needs improvement, from roads to replacements to trucks, vehicles, machinery, leaf blowers. That's been neglected in the last three years because of the hard economic turndown. It was, I think it's prudent for the city and the administration to at least allow the voters of this city to pass that and decide for themselves what type of city that they want in the future. So, I agreed with the mayor to go forth and put this legislation on for council to decide that.
The most important thing is that this is no cost to the residents of Macedonia. Is that correct?
It would be a hundred percent tax credit.
We, right now, do not have a hundred percent reciprocity. So, some of the taxpayers in this city are paying a quarter percent.
Right.
That will not happen. There will be no cost to the Macedonia residents. We will not get the full amount. We will get a good portion of it. Can you give me the rough amount?
By giving the residents a hundred percent credit of the two and a quarter, Rita predicts about a hundred and twenty thousand dollars would be less. But our economy's been growing, and we have, even without the increase, income tax collections is, has been up. But in two thousand and eight, we collected six point nine million dollars. And in two thousand and nine, when the economy tanked and you had major businesses, Grayco and Ben Venu leave, we collected five point eight million dollars, and again, five point eight in two thousand and ten. So, in two thousand and eleven, when this was enacted, Rita predicted we were going to collect about seven hundred and fifty to eight hundred thousand dollars. We did better than that for the growth of the economy, and we collected six point six. So, the bottom line is, the one point three million dollars that we'll be losing with reduced revenue will have to come cut from the capital line items, which basically is almost ninety percent of our capital. Council's been prudent. They put five hundred thousand dollars away in a rainy day fund, and they also established five hundred thousand dollars in a retirement fund. And that money might have to be tapped into. Again, there's variances down the road. We did South Bedford this year. We thought we were going to get a grant, and things come up. And it's, to me, I think it's a quality-of-life issue for the city as far as its residents. The only thing that distinguishes Macedonia from Hudson or Twinsburg or East Cleveland is the ability of the residents and how much they want to spend for their services. It's just like if you live in a condo association, if they say you need an assessment on a road, you pay it. Sometimes you don't have a will, sometimes you don't. I look at the city as that if you're protecting your investment, you want good roads. If I lived on South Bedford Road, I'd be extremely upset. At least we're addressing that situation this year because we're going to spend three hundred thousand when it's all said and done. So, it's, I think it's an important decision, no respect to this council or any council, but a situation like this that really should have resident direct input, in my opinion.
Mr. Deemer?
Yes.
I have a question. I misunderstood what Mr. Martin was offering at the time. I thought he was going to offer this for its first, second, and third reading at this time, and I voted no because I was against this ordinance. And so, what happens now? I didn't realize that he was, I kind of, Mr. Martin, I misunderstood what you were doing. And my, so what do we do now?
I made the same mistake.
Can I move to? Can I move to?
She didn't read the ordinance, so can we go back?
There was a procedural flaw here, I believe, Mr. Deemer. And there was a misunderstanding among members of council because they did not hear the ordinance.
But she wouldn't, she wouldn't read it until we say yes or no to it.
But we had, we had not stated that.
Well, we said, you said no, so she didn't read it.
The motion was to suspend the rules.
All right.
And I was going for the, in the middle of the roll call, and it...
So, what do we do? Because I thought he was just going to offer it for first, second, and third reading at that time, so that's why I said no. And I didn't know, you guys kind of lost me.
That's what he did.
Yeah.
He was suspending, going for suspension of rules.
Well, the people who voted, and were the majority, are now saying they want to reconsider, and I think those people can ask for reconsideration, can't they? So, we should bring her back.
I wanted to keep it at one reading because there are a couple of things in here that weren't in the last roll. There's a couple hundred thousand dollars going towards the Police Department that they want to use for personnel and capital. I talked to Chief Black today, and he told me that he needs a, a tower for the, for your radio system. Now, it's going to be a million dollars. Those are some of the things that were built on there. So, I thought it was reasonable to discuss it over the period of the next meeting or two. Just because we vote to give it one reading doesn't mean we're for it or against it. We're just willing to discuss it.
No, I, first of all, council got, council received no prior information on this ordinance. It was just thrown in front of us without any discussion at all. Number two, if we are to provide fire, which, by the way, just had a levy renewed, if we are to provide fire and also police with additional funding, it's my opinion that we should do it separately and dedicate that money, just as we did for the fire levy, where when the levy was passed, that money goes strictly to the Fire Department. If we want to dedicate money to the Police Department, I think what we should do is we should then propose a levy solely for the Police Department and have that money to go solely to the Police Department. This is a broad net, and I tell you what, what disappoints me more than anything else is twofold. Number one, we made a promise to the voters, and we told them, "Pass this because this is a crisis situation." They responded, but only by thirty-three votes. Number two, what bothers me further is that I was told by our Finance Director at the time that he had properly forecast, and that once this levy fell off, that we would have more than enough money. And I being told that we have four to five million dollars now. But what bothers me too is that I believe there wasn't proper forecasting that took place.
No, let me clarify what I told you.
No, I remembered, I remember what you said, and I'm not going to argue, I think, the council should bring this up.
No, sir.
Let's have some order.
Mr. Deemer, can we reconsider this ordinance?
Well, according to Robert's Rules of Order, those who were on the no side of the vote, if they wish to reconsider the motion for suspension of the rules, one of the three no votes needs to make that motion, and another no vote needs to second it. So, if you do, then you can revote the motion for suspension. So, that would be Nick, or Rita, or Mike abstained. So, if you make a motion to reconsider the vote on the suspension, there will be a, a vote on that reconsideration. If the majority vote yes on that motion, the motion for suspension of the rules can then be voted on again.
I'd like to make a motion to reconsider.
I second.
Ordinance.
So, now our vote has to be?
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
opposed?
Okay.
Roll call.
Okay, Mayor, just hold me here.
Roll call on the motion.
And this is going back to the suspension, back to square one?
Correct.
Okay.
And then how are we supposed to?
So, a vote yes means that you are going to go back and revote the suspension of the rules.
Okay, so, okay, thank you.
All right, so I'm going to do a roll call now. Mr. Barker?
It's clear as mud, Joe.
If you vote no, then you're saying you want the vote to stand.
No.
Ms. Darrow?
Yes.
Mr. Engel?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Mulner?
Yes.
Okay.
Now, someone need to make a motion to suspend the three-reading rule?
I make a motion to suspend the three-reading rule.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, hold on. Mr. Martin, you were the second, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Roll call.
No, no, it's all good.
You got it?
Mr. Barker, you were the only no, is that correct?
It sounded like it.
Correct?
Correct.
Okay. So, now we have the suspension no, now we go for adoption, correct?
There's a motion to suspend, and a second, now roll call.
Oh, okay. Mr. Barker? You already, he said it. Okay. Ms. Darrow?
Yes.
Mr. Engel?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Mulner?
Yes.
Okay, needed five votes to suspend the rules. Five votes have been cast, so the rules are suspended. Now, council can move to adopt.
I would like to offer ordinance number sixty dash two thousand thirteen for its first, second, and third reading by title only.
Sixty-seven, Mr. Martin.
Sixty-seven, Mr. Martin.
And you're, now you're just going for adoption?
I would like to offer ordinance number sixty-seven dash two thousand thirteen to be passed and post according to law.
Well, we have to vote, right?
No, she didn't read it yet.
I've read it already. Do you want me to read it again?
No, you don't need to read it again. It's a motion to suspend, it's a motion to adopt, and now you need a second.
I know, I need a second.
Roll call.
Mr. Barker?
No.
Ms. Darrow?
Yes. Wait.
Mr. Engel?
Got you.
When this was passed, three or four, four years ago, it was passed after the citizens had voted down two times to increase their real estate tax. Council then came with this proposal. The first two proposals were from the administration. I was council president at that time. I really didn't want to raise taxes, but I felt that we were in a financial crisis, not of our own making, but the making of the greater economy. I had to go to public meetings at the rec center and tell citizens that they needed to do this. I told the citizens that it was my solemn oath. Mr. Miller was with me. He was the only other council member that had the guts to go. And we stood up [bleep] there, and we said, "We promise." I keep my promises. For the last three years, every time we do a budget, I look to the Finance Director. I say, "You know the game plan. The game plan is that we're going to have enough money to get through until sixteen." The game plan is that we're gonna have enough money to get through until '16, when some of the debt comes off, and we should be able to continue on a steady course. Your reassurances have always been, you can do it, and we still can do it." So, I vote yes.
Let me go back. The motion, the motion was to adopt this ordinance.
We're supposed to vote no.
We're supposed to all vote no.
Oh, vote no.
If anybody votes, if the majority vote yes, it's gonna go on the ballot.
Oh, I'm voting no, I apologize.
I guess what I gotta go back to.
So, let's start, let's scratch the roll call and start all over. Are there any questions on this vote?
No, okay.
If you vote yes, it will go on the ballot. If you vote no, the ordinance will be defeated.
All right.
May I start again?
Thank you, Mr. Deemer.
Please.
I was wondering.
Mr. Barker?
No.
Ms. Darrow?
No.
Mr. Engel?
No.
Mr. Merton?
No.
Uh, Mr. Miller?
We promised swimming pool and basketball courts and all kinds of other things, too. Hell, no.
And Mr. Mulner?
No.
Ordinance is defeated.
Moving on, resolution number 68-2013.
I'd like to offer resolution 68-2013 for its first, second, and third reading. I'll spare you all the whereas's, I was thinking about it, but just by title only, please.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. opposed?
A resolution reaffirming our oaths of office to the United States Constitution. Not what I was supposed to do?
You're right.
They knew something?
Uh-uh.
Oh, okay.
And what's your pledge?
I move to pass and post resolution 68-2013.
Now, we need a second.
Second, please.
Roll call.
Mr. Barker?
Yes.
Ms. Darrow?
No.
Mr. Engel?
I, I just need to express very briefly. I, I obviously believe in the, in the United States Constitution. I've taken oaths to defend the Constitution every time I've been elected to council, when I became a lawyer. That's not the issue here. The, the issue that I, and I'm voting no, is that it's a feel-good ordinance, it really doesn't do anything to advance the city business. And I kind of put it akin to naming fossils, state fossils, and Flint the state mineral of Ohio, and the carnation the state flower. Makes us all feel good, but it doesn't really do much.
So, no. It's a state relic, too.
You're right, I forgot the moloch.
Mr. Merton?
I just want to point out that I understand that Mr. Barker has strong feelings about this, and so do I. I'm going to vote yes because, just lately, we've had quite a few people who call themselves Americans, and who enjoy the benefits of our country and its citizenship, act in ways that are hateful, and commit crimes against this country, and denounce it. So, Shane, I think it's a good idea, and I'm gonna vote yes.
Mr. Miller?
Did you say Mr. Miller?
I did say Mr. Miller.
I wasn't sure, I was thinking last week when I was at the archives, and I was looking at the original copy of the Constitution, and my dear friend Terry Jordan wrote the book on the Constitution, and he has, everybody has in their pocket, it's in every college bookstore in the world, and I'm gonna vote no.
Mr. Mulner?
Yes.
Resolution number 68 passes. It's a tie?
It's a tie, sir.
It's a tie, yes. Resolution 68-23 passes. Moving on, is there any other motions or legislative action?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion canceling the regular council meetings of June 27th, June 11th, and August 8th, 8th, for the purpose of summer recess.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Mr. Mayor?
Moving on?
I'd like to make an additional motion waiving the permit fees relative to the demolition of the old city hall at 9699 Valley View Road.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Are there any other motions or legislative actions?
Mr. Mayor, I would like to make a motion waiving the fees that would normally be charged along with Manor Historical Society for the building permit and other work that is being done through their volunteer efforts.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Is there any other motions or legislative actions?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that council forms a committee headed by our council president to explore the option of a full-time law department and in-house attorney.
We have a motion and a second. All, all in favor?
Aye.
No.
Roll call.
Mr. Barker?
No.
Ms. Darrow?
Yes.
Mr. Engel?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
No.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Mulner?
Am I mistaken, or have we already done this?
Two weeks ago.
Isn't there some kind of rule to do the same thing again, where something has to change within it?
No.
Yes, there are rules like that, but I haven't researched it since. Some people do.
No.
Mayor?
Before I cast my vote, I'd like to have some discussion on this motion. If someone would please explain to me why this is considered necessary, maybe that will affect the way I vote.
Well, Mr. Mayor, we all know that the city is faced constantly with challenges of paying its bills. And when you look at the things that cost the most money, police department, art department, service department, law department, and anytime there's a way that you might be able to take a look at what we're spending. I recently read in a messenger that our law department has been the same department for nearly 25 years. I find that unusual, that we have the same law department firm for 25 years. I don't ever remember voting, or seeing estimates, or price quotes for law department services, and I can't help but think, and if there's anybody out there that disagrees with me, let me know, that when you've been entrenched for 25 years, the things you do right are repeated, but also the things that you do wrong are possibly repeated. And I think the council is shirking its duty. I was not elected to come up here and tell you, Mr. Mayor, how to run your town, but I was elected to come up here and keep an eye on things, and I was elected to ask questions, even though people, many people think that that's not my job. Now, you and I both were in Washington last week. We met State Senator Sher, or Senator Sheriff Brown, we saw the Speaker of the House, we saw lots of congressmen, and we rubbed elbows with our friends from other cities and towns, Board of Education members, mayors, council people, and I said, "You know, I'm in a town here where they really don't want me to ask questions. They don't want me to look around." And they said, "The more they try to shut you up, the more you gotta look into things." So, that's why I wanna look into things. I wanna make sure that every time I say nice things about you and tell all the citizens what a great job you're doing, that I am telling the truth. Every time I say how hard this council works, that I'm telling the truth. And I wanna know that we're spending every penny right, because I run a business, I've run the same business for 30 years, and little side businesses, too. And I don't run my business like we do the city. So, is it so hard to imagine that I think, and other people agree with me, that we ought to take a look at each department, and we ought to start with the law department? That's why. If nobody else agrees with me, I'll shut them.
Mayor, if I could respond. I have annually, for the last number of years that Mr. Miller's been on council, answered these questions, I have given details, I have gone into Mr. Engel, with Mr. Engel, great detail when he was Chair of the Finance Committee, spelling out dollars and cents what it costs, and how to cut costs, and we did impose those costs, and those savings. And to bring in a full-time law department, I also explained and analyzed what I've seen in other communities, and what it costs, and how it doesn't work. Absolutely no one, especially Mr. Miller, after doing their own research and getting comparables from all the other cities, has ever responded to my letters and said, "That's wrong," or "That's not right," or "There's a better way to do it." No one, in the past four, five years, has ever responded to my redundant, repetitive responses to the same question that Mr. Miller brings up. And it seems that this is his way of doing things, that when the police department doesn't cater to his requests or his wishes, he threatens to get a sheriff's department to take over.
You better stop where you're saying, right there. Because if you say another false statement...
I have the floor, Mr. Miller.
If you say another false statement, sir...
Well, I'm saying what I think.
I'm not gonna let it go next time.
Well, you ain't gonna let it go this time.
Stop it, just stop it right now, because you are lying.
Mayor, I had the floor. Now, you want...
Just because you have the floor, doesn't mean you can lie.
Mr. Miller, there's only one liar speaking now, and that's you. And I don't think I need to hear any more of that. Now, you've never said a true thing about this department, nor the police department, and for you to react and retaliate the way you are, just because I call you on the carpet when you do something wrong, is a response that is abusive of employees, and me particular. We have done hard work for this community for going on 24 years. We have won many, many cases. I have never...
And you shouldn't worry about us taking a look, should you?
I, I have never questioned taking a look, and looks have been taken. Several years ago, looks were taken. 10 years ago, looks were taken. Looks are taken constantly. And we're open to all kinds of examination, but I don't want to just be retaliated against and treated that way. We have never done anything wrong. You want to point out something that's been wrong that I've done, point it out, we'll talk about it. But you don't do that, you just attack me personally, and that is, that's unfortunate. I try to be a professional person.
Do you see a personal attack?
How you gather two, how you gather two supporting votes, who also have never told me anything that they think we've done wrong, or a better way that I could run this department? How, how anyone could feel that way?
So, half of council must be wrong because you disagree with us.
No, I didn't say they're wrong, I'm just questioning, why doesn't somebody talk to me about it?
Okay, well, the whole idea was a motion to have a council committee. You shouldn't need me talking about this.
I have a right to speak.
You don't run this council meeting.
No, the mayor does.
No, and I asked the question, and I asked the question because of personal experience. When I became mayor, Mastoni had a full-time engineer, and that engineer made top dollar, and he was a good engineer. But we also had a list of other companies where work was constantly farmed out, and it, I didn't think it worked as well as having what we have now, which is GPD, where we have one company, and whatever type of specialist we need, we have. We have Joe Deemer and Associates. When I became mayor, I had a friend who was a lawyer, who really wanted to be our city law director, and I had people telling me, "You gotta get rid of Joe Deemer." Well, let me tell you something. I was also left the daunting task of dealing with Norfolk Southern Railroad, and I'm not about to put our city in jeopardy to go with somebody that's not of top caliber. How many communities do you represent, Joe?
I've represented 13 over the past career, 25 years. Currently, we're at three.
Do you...
Mayor, how did this become a question on defending Joe Deemer?
No.
The question was, should we form a committee?
No. I am, I want to be told what the reasons are that this has come up two council meetings in a row. Right now, the city is involved in a lawsuit. There have been things that have happened recently regarding politics that could lead to people saying, "I don't want this guy persecuting me." There are things that happen today regarding politics, and is it because of those things that this is coming up? Or is it because this man isn't doing what he's supposed to do? I feel that that was a justifiable question to ask. I want somebody to tell me why, are we gonna do this every meeting? I mean, I need my employees to have them feel councils behind them. If council's not behind our, our lawyer, how's he gonna defend us in the millions of, of dollars we could be facing in lawsuits now? And we have lawsuits going on right at this time, and this man has defended us before, we've never lost, we've never had any problems. If it ain't broke, don't fix it.
You know, I just want to say a couple of things. It just, it appears to me that every department had in the last year and a half has had their turn in, in, in the hot scene. It seems like it's the law department's turn. You know, I've been around lawyers all my life, and my job, I deal with lawyers all the time, and if I ever got, it's not just, I hate to use, I was using somebody's name for something. It's just, it's everybody that works for your firm, I've, I've come to know, and they do a darn good job. Could we go cheaper? Maybe, possibly, we could go cheaper. What are we gonna get, what do you pay for it? It seems like we always get what you pay for, maybe it's not gonna be the best way to go. But if I ever need a lawyer, these are the people I want with me. I, I don't know that I can say anything more about that.
Joe, I, I just want to point out one thing. I, I've taken a look at your work, and I've had an opportunity to work much more closely with you this year, since I'm council president. I don't think a lot of people realize how much money you saved the city, and I've seen that. And secondly, I want to point out an instance back in the early 1990s, when I was sued personally for 1.3 million dollars because of a decision that I made on planning commission, and everybody told me I was on the wrong side, that this man had a perfect legal right to build mini warehouses right next to the high school. And we denied that on the planning commission on the basis of the health, safety, and welfare of the community. And we had two planning commission members who voted in favor of this developer. And I was told that I was toast, that I acted maliciously, and that this man had a perfect legal right. That case went all the way up to the Supreme Court, and you know what? Joe Deemer won. That's the kind of person I want in our corner. I don't want a neophyte running around city hall who's gonna be paying attention to every Tom, Dick, and Harry, who is going to be distracted by politics because Mr. Deemer has remained independent, he's made good legal judgments, and he has protected the city, and he has saved the city money. Look at the numbers, they work. And you know what? Joe, you're perfectly right. I have never seen anyone on this council present any type of pro forma showing that they could do it for less. And I feel, in many ways, that we're getting a bargain.
It's because we never look at it.
That's not true, Mr. Miller.
I'd like to make one statement and pose one question. Mr. Deemer, I came to you, what was it, about two years ago, man to man, and said to you exactly what he's proposing, and said, you know, "This is what we're thinking about doing," and I was a strong proponent behind that. Then, looking at all the things that have transpired, this has become a personal matter. And I have every reason to dislike you. If you recall, I was standing in a courtroom, and you were against me.
On behalf of Mr. Miller, by the way.
And in that, you said he would make a great guy for the Parks and Rec Committee, which infuriated me, and I should really dislike you severely. But your credentials and what I've seen since I've been up here has proven me wrong. This matter's become personal, and I, I think it's, it's, and I'm gonna use this word, pathetic, that we continue to deal with this up here. If you have a problem with someone, you go to them. You don't keep attacking them. I mean, every department I had sits up there has been attacked. You go to them, you talk to them. If you can't resolve it there, then we bring it up here.
A request for a council committee is not an attack. A request for a council committee to look at an issue is my job. A request for a council committee to look at an issue is my job.
Like, that came about after the situation, and I'm not gonna dive into it. It came about after the situation occurred with the police.
The point is that half of this council agrees with you, and the other half doesn't.
Well, I'm still waiting for the other two to give their reasons why. That was my question. Ms. Darrow, Mr. Engel, why, what is your reasons? I mean, is it to save money? Do you feel he's not doing a good job? I'd like to know.
Not enough issues to work on other than this? I mean, this is really not an issue.
The question is, should council form a committee to look at a full-time, in-house lawyer, and the benefits thereof? And if this council doesn't look at that, then they are not doing their job. Period.
There's no way that I don't think that there is any way that one person can do it. It's like what we have with GPD, and you guys met with them a couple of weeks ago when I wasn't here, because they have multiple people to use for different things. And it's the same thing with the law department we have now. I have nothing to gain by this. I'm leaving. I've told everybody that. It works. It's working well.
And the quality of their research is great. They get it out to you quick. And Mr. Deemer and his office always return phone calls, and they always return them quickly. And those are the things that are important.
I would like to say something, that, as Mr. Miller said, the council's divided. And people are divided against me, and they don't even know me. I've been attacked and accused of things that when somebody's never even got to know me, and find out who I am, and find out what kind of a person I am. Everybody up there, department heads, I have never, ever been disrespectful to you, unkind to you. I've always been nice to you. I, I have not done anything wrong to anyone up there. And I'm being accused of it by several different things. Another reason why I voted the way I did is, is a personal issue, which I would love to tell you privately, you know, why I, I, something that has happened to me, and I think it's wrong, and I think we need to look into certain departments, and, you know, to see where we can save money.
Personal about...
I'm not sure where that remains to the topic.
But, you know...
Are you implying personal about me? Or you, personal about you generally?
We're trying to save money.
It's, it's not, besides that, there's something that happened to me...
That I did?
That was done in an executive session, and I have the email to back it up.
That I did?
That I was taken into an executive session, and I was questioned, and didn't even know I was being questioned, until I asked for the email, which Mr. Monarch provided me with.
Instantly.
You know, no, not instantly. It took me a long time to get the email. And that's very upsetting to me. And I think that's wrong. I'm an elected official. Somebody should not have taken me into an executive session and asked me personal, I mean, asked me questions about something that I didn't even know I did. Okay?
So, it's not the money, it's something that I did that you didn't like?
It's, it's something that, I think that's wrong. And I formed my own opinion. When I first got on this council, I'm gonna tell you, I had several people come up to me and ask me personally about the law department. I said to them, "I will not make a major decision for one year. I needed to form my own opinion of the law department, of the, of the building department, of the rec center, of the finance department, the firemen, the policemen." I formed my own opinion. I'm a big girl. I don't need somebody...
Other than, other than that, other than that one email over the past year and a half, have you asked me for other things to do?
If I get into this, there might be, there was another incident, which I'm sure Mr. Engel can form. We all got emails from your law department. Okay? If you want to know my answer, we got emails from your law department stating there was a resident that actually, we're supposed to be a mediation performed with our city, the law department, and a resident for public records request. Okay? We had emails being sent back to us that the resident canceled that mediation. Well, I picked up the phone, I seen all the emails, I picked up the phone, I called the attorney general's office, and I asked, "Who canceled the meeting?" I found out very fast. They called me back within five minutes and told me exactly who canceled the meeting, the time, the date, and everything. And it wasn't the resident. Okay? And I've not said a word. I did tell Mr. Engel about it, because I was in hospice with a dying...
Why does this keep coming up? Didn't I document that? I gave the phone message, I gave the emails?
Mr. Deemer, don't, don't look at me. The, 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 I'm, I'm wanting to look at a committee, because I'm always willing to look at committees to...
Well...
May I finish? I have the floor.
Gets frustrating, Dave.
It does. But it also gets frustrating when I get cut off. I'm just saying, don't pull me into emails and things like that. I want to look at the city to make it run efficiently. I don't have a personal vendetta against you, Mr. Deemer. I've worked with you for many years as finance director, as president. I do not doubt your ability as an attorney. And I've, and I've, and when I've disagreed with you professionally, I've disagreed with you. When I've agreed with you, I have agreed with you in public. So, just because I think it's good to look at ways to improve the city.
Mr. Mayor, could you please call the question?
Yes.
Well, it was called, we're just waiting for Mr. Mayor, honor.
Yeah, you, you are waiting for an answer to my question.
Do I have three emails or I have three...
And I think the best part of that was, I am calling the question. Good. The best part was, we should try not to be divisive. We should try and remember that we need to do what's best for the city. In my opinion, Joe Deemer is the best for this city. Moving on, are there any other motions or...
Joe, you're a very good attorney, by the way.
You still have to vote no, Mayor, or yes.
Yes, sir. Okay. I, I, yeah, I want to make a motion.
No, he doesn't. He could've voted yes.
I said, "Or yes."
Oh, okay.
I, I would like to make a motion.
Go ahead.
I would like to make a motion to transition to monthly payroll for council to comply with the new requirements of opers? Is it opers?
Yeah, opers, correct.
Okay. Any second?
Second.
Thank you.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
No.
And I think, Mr. Deemer...
All right, we need some discussion on this.
I would make an amendment to it.
Yeah, we're gonna amend.
Mr. Deemer, should this be an ordinance rather than a motion, because it's...
It could be a motion if she's making it, got a second. But you need a roll call, because I heard a no in there somewhere, so...
Well, I'd like to make an amendment to before we vote on it. How can I...
Oh, sure.
Yeah, he said amendment. I don't think there was a no.
Okay, so there was a motion and a second.
But I would like to make an amendment to the motion.
Do you have an, Josephine, now there's...
I do, I do. Ms. Darrow, motion. Mr. Martin, second. It's a, she's, her motion is for a monthly payment plan relative to opers.
Okay, and...
The transition of that.
You want to amend that motion?
I'd like to amend the motion that Ms. Darrow just made.
Okay.
I'd amend it to make it effective 1/1 of 2014.
Okay. So, a second to that amendment?
Second.
Okay, now you need a roll call on just that amendment to make it effective January 1, 2014. Or do you want to amend your original motion to do that?
Huh.
That's when the law goes into effect.
Right, I know. But Scott was saying in his email to me that it's easier if we go on and start transitioning into it now.
You know, can I make a comment here? If we're going to bring motions, you know, to the council such as this, I, I, I really think that if we're going to ask for the law department to be examined, or for things to be changed, that what we need to do is, we need to define early on actually what we're doing. And maybe, Mr. Deemer, if you could go ahead, perhaps, and draft an ordinance here, and that way, you can make sure that we're complying fully with the terms of this new law, which is very complicated. That way, we're going to accomplish what Ms. Darrow wants to accomplish. It doesn't go into effect until 2014. It's only the fifth month of, of the year. Is that a better idea, or should we just go ahead and do...
I'm, I'm happy to do that, but there's two motions on the floor that have been seconded.
Do you want to withdraw these?
I withdraw my motion.
Great.
And then we'll do the ordinance.
Shane, you willing to withdraw yours?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Deemer. Thank you, Shane. Thank you, Rita.
Are there any other motions or legislative actions? I think we're done. Correspondence to the clerk.
I have several, sir. This is from resident Jeff Lascola, who lives at, on Valley View Road. And this is to Mr. DiGutano. Thank you so much. The crew, ditch crew came and did the work fast. I was expecting that they would be, it would happen in the middle of summer. We had two or three days of rain, and my yard is very dry to the bone. Normally, after that rain, the yard would be swampy mess. Not anymore. Thank you again. I am very, very pleased by the job that was done. Dear Chief Black, this is from Lieutenant Mackey from the village of Norfield. I would like to take the time to commend Captain Ripley and to thank you, thank him for his efforts and professionalism, as well as thank Macedonia Fire Department and the city of Macedonia for allowing Captain Ripley to work with other agencies whenever needed. Captain Ripley has always been a consummate professional, and has always represented the city of Macedonia and the fire department in the most exemplary way. The most recent time was during the recent radio narrowband project. Captain Ripley went above and beyond the job coordinating and reprogramming all the portable and mobile radios from several agency and the multiple departments within each agency. Captain Ripley always makes every effort to help everyone. This makes a true asset to the city of Macedonia. This is to Mr. DiGutano from Betty Hekades. Just a quick email for the outstanding job that Brian and crew, sorry, I don't know their names, did on the sidewalk in front of my house. They were very different, they were very, they weren't very different. They were very efficient. They're not different, Jim. They're just efficient and courteous. I also wanted to give a big, big thank you. Unlike the past, you completed the job like promised. Macedonia made a great choice in selecting you as new service director. This is from Jeff Gliha. Dear Honorable Mayor, I would like to take the opportunity to thank the Macedonia Police Department for ensuring that I wasn't experiencing any, any type of medical emergency condition. I really appreciate the professionalism of your department, and sleep much better knowing your guys are keeping the people safe and secure in this fantastic community. And I don't know exactly where he lives, but he is a Macedonia resident. That's it, Your Honor.
Very good. Next is the mayor's report. Memorial Day is a time to reflect. We need to do that once in a while. So much is taken for granted today without the realization of the sacrifices it took us to get to this point. The lifestyle we enjoy today. Having us say in your government is way better than being a peasant. My great-grandparents were peasants. I think if they'd come back today and see where I lived and what I did, they'd say, "Oh, my God, I'm royalty." And I'm not. I'm just an average American. Our lifestyle is a gift from those who preceded us. Many of them made the ultimate sacrifice for us while serving in the armed forces. I've been inundated with phone calls and emails concerning our utility companies. First of all, I agree with every complaint. Problem is, I can't fix them. As far as Cleveland Water is concerned, they overcharge us, they don't pay back the money they should when we fix a street after a pipe ruptures, they only pay back a small portion of what it costs us. I've even written Mayor Jackson and asked his assistance. I was never answered. Akron Water's an option, but the hurdles it challenges with seem almost insurmountable. But I did meet with Mayor Dennis Claw from Westlake, who is attempting to leave Cleveland Water. And he's going to keep me posted on how they overcome some of the obstacles. For instance, Cleveland Water wants five years' notice if you intend to get water elsewhere. They also want huge disconnect fees. I imagine all they have to do is shut a valve. Perhaps Mayor Claw will blaze a trail that we can follow, because this kind of stuff just can't go on. On another front, Dominion showed up in Mastoni and started painting yellow lines in the yards of our residents without notifying the city. They also leave behind these nice little door hangers stating that your shed, pool, or fence is infringing on their easement. I met with their representative, Bob Barley, in my office to find out why, now, after all these years, they're challenging infringements. I asked for the gas company to come back with a letter that these residents could sign stating they realized they might get their shed, pool, fence destroyed if an emergency would come up. But some of these homes, that, that gas line goes back 35 years, and some of these homes have changed hands 10 times in 35 years. It was no dice. They don't want any part of working with us. Live by the rules. Move it. I asked why the residents were not informed regularly, so that they would not put anything in easements. He said the residents affected were informed by flyers. He sent me a copy. The flyers said, "You may have a gas line easement on your property or near your property." It told you what to do in case you suspect a leak, who to call, et cetera. Nothing in that flyer mentions easements. Nowhere in the pamphlets did it give dimensions, warnings of infringements, or what to expect if infringement occurred. Some of these homes getting notices have their lots changed so many times, and there's a 30-inch main there. Most people didn't realize easement was 60 feet of their property. I'm not really sure why, having a few feet on that easement, some of the encroachments, these, these horrible encroachments are three feet or four feet, and they want you to move that pool or move that shed that's been there for 15 years? I was informed, Dominion feels you should know because it's in your deed. Having something in your deed does not sound like ample warning to me. When was the last time you looked at your deed? It's not exactly classified common knowledge. If you did, how would you stay awake? I think this is not good customer service or notification procedure. I am under the impression that it's not very common to have a 30-inch line replaced. I'm not even sure the city properly notified, was notified of the easements, because the city is giving permits for sheds, for pools. And the county didn't have a map of the easement. How many people are we talking about? I, I don't know if you can see how thick this is. It's about an eighth of an inch thick. But for me to read these names on here, I actually have to use a magnifying glass. All of these, all of these addresses, all of these people are for, are affected by a 60-foot easement. I really can't see what the big deal is. People put a shed in their backyard, it's in that easement a little bit, so what? What's the big deal? Are you going in there to fix the pipe? No. Is there a problem? No. Why make these people spend that money to take down their fences, take down their pools, take down their sheds, or move them? To me, it seems a little heavy-handed, and it's 35 years later. I was in Washington last week, Thursday and Friday, for Congressman Dave Joyce and Congressman Jim Renace's Northeast Ohio Elected Officials Conference. I have attended every single one of these conferences, except when I was convalescing it last year, and at that time, they were held by Congressman Lot Tourette. You know, networking with other elected officials is good. Rita went this year, Mike went. They got a chance to talk to other people from other communities, other counties. The conference is always a good place to meet and work with the representative of businesses, too, and educational and medical facilities. I'm hoping that this year's conference once again leads to results for the betterment of Macedonia. I met with our Congressman Dave Joyce privately while there, and I am hoping for a direction from his office for our, for us to address our citywide traffic signal. We have a, made tremendous progress in bettering our infrastructure over the last year, 10 years. Now, my staff and I would like to embark on a project that would analyze and implement transportation management. This will ultimately result in existing signal replacement, new signalizing equipment, transportation management to control safety, service warning, preemption systems, and also battery backups. Why battery backups? Because now we have a terrible, terrible storm, bam, goes the lightning, out goes the traffic light. And then what happens? We have one... We have one of our policemen in the middle of that intersection in a blooming blizzard or hailstorm or rainstorm directing traffic. And I'm scared to death they're going to get hit out there. So with battery backups and LED lights, you don't have to worry about a policeman ever going into an intersection again. Do some context, I'm aiding Washington on this trip. I'm still pursuing bringing Akron University Satellite here. I think we have the perfect place to put them, and that being located and accessible would allow them to prosper here. On the home front, we are presently accepting bids on creating a Macedonia Telephone app. This app would work on all smartphones, make everything you need your city for easier to get. On it will be categories such as about, government, contact, or report. So you go to your smartphone, you hit your app, homepage opens up. On the homepage, you want to report a dog running around in your neighborhood, you want to report a chuckle. So you look for that bar, and it says chuckle, bang, you hit that with your finger, and it automatically dials and puts you in touch with the right people. I think Macedonia, I like Macedonia to be at the forefront as far as communications between the residents of here and our city hall. We try and keep you informed through every media that is available to us, but when you think about it, we had over 3 million hits on our website last night. We know how important it is for you to feed the hunger for information. Our Macedonia Messenger and list of recipients keeps growing, and you know what, I never really say thank you to Diana publicly, but she puts a lot of effort into keeping you abreast of everything good about your city. We're making strides on our beautification, check it out, look around. You'll check out our city hall, you'll see everything from mulch beds of flowers, we got some hanging baskets starting to go up, more is coming with improvements to Memorial Park and the Recreation Center on the list. Thank you, Jim, for all that your crew is doing, please thank them for me, because they're working their tails off, and that's the end of my report. Moving on to committee reports. Are there any committee reports? The Planning Commission met on Monday and approved the development called Redwood. Redwood is a development that will be built behind the Girl Scout building. There's a cul-de-sac there. To the one side of the cul-de-sac will be an assisted living center, and then you're going to have this high-income rental properties there. The properties are mostly triplexes, they are not apartment buildings, they're houses. And the beginning rent for these will be in the $1,500 range. So this is, when it came before the Planning Commission, we made sure of a couple of things, like having sidewalks in there and making sure that the buildings were completely surrounded with stone ledges. They look sharp, they look good, they have differences in colors, so they go along with our code where every third house or every fourth house has to be a different color. So they're going to be starting as soon as possible. Right now, they have 3,000 units in the state of Ohio, and they're hoping within the next year to make it 6,000. So they're growing everywhere. They're in Hudson, and they're going to be building on the property that the school used to own. Are there any other committee reports? Hearing none, our department reports. Jim?
Thank you, Mayor, Council. The Service and Parks Department, we've been pretty busy improving the grounds at Memorial, Longwood, City Hall, and the Recreation Center in between starting the infrastructure projects that we have. To date, we have done over 3,000 feet of ditching alone. We completed sidewalk repairs and improvements on Saybrook and Newport, plus numerous other stormwater projects, and more coming up. As everybody knows, the Recreation Center interior walls are complete and are being painted, and that should be done tonight. We found that the walls, as you know, were not done right to begin with. The anchors were never put in properly. We have pictures and documentation on that. Also, the exterior walls will be completed this week, by this weekend. And we also found that work was not done properly there either. And we have documentation and all the information on that also. It seems that all the capstones, no flashing was ever put there. And also those nice arched windows were never put in properly. They're actually three inches off. That could cause why we had so much need for it. This information will be given to Mr. Demick, and we're hoping that maybe we can, maybe get something back on what we had to spend. We will do the roof as soon as the insurance company and I have received all the costs from the roofers. Hopefully, we can schedule the roof at the next council meeting. I will have to send a memo explaining to council what the responsibilities will be to the city and what the insurance will pay. And on a last note, Green Line, a local landscape company, will give a 10% discount to all Macedonia residents on brown mulch and topsoil until July 4th. So if you're interested, you know, give them a call, and they'll give you that discount. All you'll need is proof of residency. That's my report, Mayor.
How about the mulch that we put out, free mulch? It was gone so fast.
Yeah, that just, that went within a week and a half, two weeks, it was gone.
So there's nothing left?
Nothing.
All right, thank you, Jim. Mike?
Thank you, Mayor. Zoning update, we've sent out 161, we've done 161 point-of-sale inspections this year, 198 zoning letters have been issued, 37 noxious weed citations, and we've cut five lawns this year. New home starts are 14, homes under construction are 50, additions, we have six, alterations, 20. Commercial update, new businesses, we have 14 of them this year, under construction, we have six. Exterior remodeling and additions, we have four, and renovations, we have eight. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mike. Angela?
Thank you, Mayor. We are currently seeking vendors for our farmer's market that is going to begin on June 25th and run for 12 weeks on Tuesdays from 3:00 to 6:00 at Memorial Park. Our community flea market is scheduled for Saturday, June 15th. We are accepting registrations for booth spaces at this time for residents and non-residents as well. And just a reminder that the Recreation Center will be closed on Monday, May 27th, in observance of Memorial Day. So we'd like to wish everybody a nice, long holiday weekend, safe holiday weekend. Thank you.
Thank you.
Excuse me, Angela, what, what booth space event are you holding?
Community Flea, the annual community flea market that's held in Longwood Park.
I see.
Angela, what day is that on again?
Saturday, June 15th.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
All right, Scott?
Thank you, Mayor. Just briefly, we're on track to meet our projected income tax revenue collections for the general fund. We forecast $6,800,000. We collected 36.26% to date at the end of April. May, part of the May results are out, and it's going to be a heavy collection month as well. And the Recreation Fund, which also gets a percentage of the income tax received to date, at 38.5%, and that was budgeted at $915,000. And in 2011, we had a carryover of $6,208,000. In 2012, we had a carryover, all funds unexpended, of $6,276,000. And when we talked about in our Finance Committee where we wanted to be at the end of 2013, we knew how much we were going to spend, and we wanted to target $6 million at the end. And that's a myriad of all different funds put together. And we've had the highest carryovers in the last couple of years because of this boost of income tax. But like I said before, we have paid out with council enough money on the capital end of it to justify the quarter percent increase. And in no way, this, this budget has been sustainable, Mr. Martin, and that's the revenue that we go for. If you want a $6 million carryover, I'll provide that for you. If you want $7 million, we'll do that also. So we live within the budget of the revenue that I forecast. Let me just reiterate that again. You're part of the Finance Committee, and anytime that we're in there making these decisions on capital, you're weighing in also.
Mr. Schwab, as far as your forecast is concerned, we were told when we approved that tax for three years that once it was ended, it would no longer be needed. So what I'm saying is, is that what I expect is to be presented with correct, accurate figures, and if we need more money down the road, I expect it to be explained to me when I'm approving a tax or a revenue enhancement.
Yes, sir. I'll get you through 2017, you're correct, I said that. But what I'm telling you is you won't have the level of spending in capital. That's what I'm telling you.
All right, thank you, Scott. Tim?
We are out performing our hydrant maintenance, so if you see fire trucks out, we'll be wearing vests, but we'll be flushing all the hydrants in the city like we do every year. And I'd just like to say, Mr. Barker, that, that the tower is not a radio tower, it's our aerial tower truck. It's a 1990, it's coming up on its 20 years of useful life, so that's what we're looking at. Right now, for the last two years, we've been applying for grants to, to get partial replacement of that truck, and that's a truck that will be needing to replace coming up soon.
I just knew it was something we needed to keep in mind here for the very near future, so that's why I brought it up.
Okay. Thank you, that's all I have, Mayor.
Very good. Any news on the ISO rating yet, Tim?
No news, 45 days. We're still getting together a lot of information for him. He did not, he had some real good questions about dispatch, and we believe that we can do a little bit better if we get him further information. So that's still being worked on.
Excellent. Good. Very good. Police is next.
Do I have any report?
I guess that's a good thing, huh?
Great. I just want to also thank you for the work on the traffic lights. First I heard of it, it's always nice to know that hopefully in the near future, I won't have to stand out in the middle of an intersection during a rainstorm or a snowstorm and try to dodge sliding cars at me.
That's right. You've been there, done that. All right. Joe?
Nothing further, Mayor.
Okay. Is there any unfinished?
Nick out there?
Nick? Okay, thank you.
Highland Road Bridge deckwork started, project's on schedule for an August opening. Engineering Department had a meeting with ODOT in Twinsburg regarding the Shepherd Road resurfacing. That project will start in August. It'll be the same contractor that you just passed legislation for this evening for South Bedford. And I'll update you on the 271 widening, the public meeting as information's available.
Hey, Nick, what about the North Bedford sewer problem we were talking about? Where are we at with that? With the drainage?
Engineering hasn't, we haven't done anything with the North Bedford project yet. It's been designed for a couple of years.
Well, we approved that for this year. I was just asking, I mean, are we, is anything in process right now with that?
No, I wasn't aware that we were authorized to go out for bids for that. Again, the engineering is designed for that, it's been designed for a couple of years.
Mike, Lad?
Can I have a public hearing or something?
Yes, I mean, the, the original design was done a couple of years ago. There was talk, when we talked about it, about Service Department doing it and getting reimbursed back from Regional Sewer District is the way we left it.
Of course, we had legislation on that, too, as well, didn't we?
I don't think we needed legislation on that. I don't think there was any.
Can you get me a memo on that?
Sure.
Let me know what's going on?
Sure.
Thanks.
Good job, Nick. Have write a memo.
The Northeast Ohio Regional Sewer District will be refunding us money, and we are formulating plans how to spend that money, Nick, but we haven't come up with anything solid yet because we're not quite sure how much we're going to get back. But that project will be in there.
For this year.
Yeah. Well, when do we actually get the money?
We can get some money this year.
Okay, so.
This year.
How much do we have so far? Because we get a percentage.
$200,000, you said?
Well, not yet. The first year, we were going to be very conservative. We were looking at, you know, like $60,000 is what we were looking at for the first year because they were having trouble collecting from people. We just don't know where we're going to be total dollar-wise for probably, you know, another year after this. But we could end up with a lot more than that 60, but we were trying to stay conservative with that approach. And yes, this was one of the projects that we talked about.
For this year.
And we are. We did talk about it this year, yeah.
Hey, hey, Mike, because you guys have some of the material already over by the, on Twinsburg Road over there. Am I right to do that project?
Yes.
Right. Okay.
Is there any other unfinished business?
Mr. Mayor, I just want to congratulate my wife on 32 years of marriage today. And as Mr. Engel calls her Saint Kathy, I just want to let her know that in this case, civic duty preceded a dinner, but I'll make it up later this week.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Have you been married?
I will be married 50 years July 6th.
Wow.
Wow. That's great.
This is the year.
You guys all deserve a anniversary.
Fifty years.
That applause is for your wife.
And for Saint Kathy.
What's your wife's name? First name?
Saint Joan.
Saint Joan of Arc. Saint Joan of Macedonia.
Can you tell me, can you tell me if the law director is a city employee?
Can I? Are you asking me?
Under new business, I'm asking him.
Oh.
Is the law director a city employee?
Could I make a motion to adjourn?
No, 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 not yet.
I guess it would depend on how he's classified. His retainer is eligible for PERS.
Why don't you ask him after the meeting, Scott? Is he a city employee?
It depends on how.
I seconded the motion.
Wait, wait.
We have motion in the second.
Can I call the question, please?
The motion for. Democracy in America, watch it, right here, this is it, people at home.
I have a, I have a new, new business.
One of your own council members said motion to adjourn. Rita, when that happens, that's it.
I understand, ashamed.
We're done.
This is kind of important.
Well, we have to vote.
We do that all the time, though.
We have to vote.
All in favor?
No.
Roll call.
Mr. Barker?
Yes.
Ms. Durrell?
No.
Mr. Engel?
Yes.
Mr. Barton? Mr. Miller?
Who cares?
And Mr. Miller?
I care, yes.
All right, we're adjourned, folks. Thank you very much, have a nice Memorial Day weekend.